For the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, Agenda Item Number Two is Public Input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee this evening? Good evening.
Good evening.
Harris in Southbridge. I want to state publicly my support for this committee and its efforts to move our school system forward in a positive way. I'm aware that some of you have been subjected to personal attacks simply because you've chosen public service. That's just the state of things in our time, in our day of instant communication and anonymity. Anything goes. However, perception is not necessarily reality. No matter how often your critics say things have never been worse, they can't erase our collective memories of years of nepotism, cronyism, favoritism, good old boy-ism, narcissism, and a whole lot of ineptitude that brought our school system so far down and kept it there. It's been said that when the going gets tough, the tough get going. It may help you to remember that some of your severest critics, when faced with their own tough going, did the same thing over and over again. They quit. Dishing it out is easy. Taking it, that's the challenge. So, good luck as you move forward. We're counting on you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abramson. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Alivo.
He's not here.
Mrs. Congdon.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mrs. Quinney.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Four present.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five is the approval of minutes. We're going to seek to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of March 25th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Congdon?
Just under members in attendance, just an addition would be Julie Field.
Oh, thank you for that.
That was it.
With that correction, are there any other? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you. Under new business, number five, I announce that Eastford Road's parent luncheon would be on Thursday, the 27th, and West Street Schools would be on Friday, March 28th. That is all. Thank you.
We'll make those correct. With those corrections, is there any other discussion? So, can we have the vote to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of March 25th, 2014 with the noted corrections? I mean, I'm sorry, can we have a vote? Roll call vote. I'll do roll call.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Four yes?
Mr. Alivo, join the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to abstain on the vote?
I'll abstain.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have a vote to approve the special school committee meeting of the whole. It was held April 2nd, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on those minutes? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes? Yeah, five yes.
Thank you. Under chairwoman's announcements, I just have a few brief things. There will be a joint meeting with the Education and Human Services Subcommittee regarding the proposed school budget. That meeting will be held Thursday, April 17th, at 6 o'clock in the Town Hall. I'm not sure what room. Does anybody know if it's been assigned a room? I couldn't find that information, but it will be at Town Hall. And I assume it will be posted outside in the meeting notices. April Vacation begins April 18th, that's Good Friday, and runs through April 25th, so just wanted everybody to be aware of that. And finally, I just wanted to make a brief statement, if I may. Since the March 25th meeting, a school committee meeting, the school committee has received feedback from both the staff and the community on the presentation that took place that evening. There are strong feelings on the part of those who believe the presenters were treated unfairly and those who believe the school committee acted appropriately, given the information that was presented to us. The school committee would like to make it very clear that it was never our intent to embarrass anyone. The purpose of the presentation was not to assess any individuals, but to evaluate the strengths and the weaknesses of a district program. From that presentation, we learned many valuable lessons collectively. First, we believe the district must undertake a review of job descriptions for all staff to ensure those job descriptions accurately reflect both the essential duties and performance expectations. Second, the district must ensure curriculum is in place for all departments that can be meaningfully implemented in all of our schools. And finally, we learned that the school committee needs to establish guidelines for presentations to the school committee. It's only fair that those who come before us have a sense of the information we're seeking. Our plan moving forward is to address these issues by directing the superintendent to oversee the review and, if necessary, creation and/or revision of job descriptions and district curriculum. The school committee itself has a responsibility for developing clear guidelines for future presentations. In the near future, we would like to have further discussion with other departments as to existing and needed resources so that we can empower all of our staff to do their jobs that is both meaningful to them, meaningful to our students, and fulfilling to them professionally. Thank you very much. Next, we have a report of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee. We're pleased to see Ms. Rosa Brito again. Rosa?
Good evening. Well, let's start off with this week, obviously. So, Wednesday, April 9th, we have a school council meeting at 5:30 PM at SMHS Library. Thursday, April 10th, we have the Middle School Musical, which is the musical of musicals. And it's at 7:00 PM. It will be $5 for adults, $3 for students and senior citizens, and free for children three and under. It will be at the auditorium. Please come and join and support the middle school. Also, that day, there will be a field trip to Millbury High School for aiding students that are sophomores and juniors to go to a college fair. I recommend all students that are willing to go to go. That's where I found my perfect match for my college. Friday, April 11th is, again, the musical of musicals at 7:00 PM, so please come and join. It's the exact same prizes, same place, same people. Come and support. Then, on the 12th, which is a Saturday, we have NHS is holding a car wash. It will be at UNOS. It will be from 12 to 4:00 PM. And that day, we're also doing a doll raisin', which will be the whole weekend. So, if you come and wash your car, we'll give you a little coupon so you can go to UNOS, enjoy a nice dinner with your family, your girlfriend, whoever you want to bring. And we will get part of that money as well, so come and support us. That money will go to scholarships, and we will donate a part of it as well to charity. Then, on Sunday, April 13th, the middle school band will be performing in Providence, Rhode Island, from 12:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Best luck to them. I bet they were gonna get something good. Then, on Tuesday, April 15th, the Army will be in the cafeteria during the high school lunches promoting themselves as well for those students that are interested to go into college, but maybe they want to go into the Army. On Wednesday, April 16th, the high school social studies class of Mr. Tomon will have a statehouse field trip, so best of luck to them. I hope they enjoy it. On Thursday, April 17th, is a high school health fair from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the small gym. And also, that day is my favorite part. We're gonna do an Adopt a Senior fundraiser. NHS is holding it. All teachers and students, underclassmen, will be able to buy a senior for a whole day, and we will be their quote-unquote slave. We will be doing their homework. We will be carrying their lunches. We will be doing anything they want us to do for that one day, but you have to pay a good price for us because we are worth it. We are the seniors of that school. Then, on Friday, April 18th, there will be no school. It's Good Friday. Hallelujah. We will have no school for a whole week, from Monday, April 21st to Friday, April 25th, because it is spring break, so please enjoy yourself, go on vacation, have some fun, relax, and then come back to do some work. But that's not all. We have more things going on. So, let me just tell you about this band trip that the high school did to Virginia this last weekend. They received an excellence award. They won first place in their division, so congratulations to them. They deserved it. They're very good, so I'm very proud to say they got first place. Also, for the seniors, the new scholarship list was passed out last week, so go downstairs, talk to Ms. Cook, talk to Ms. Faraco, sign up for those scholarships. We need that money. College is important. Also, from the senior class, I have a few announcements. So, on May 16th is our senior trip. We're going to High Meadow Resort in Connecticut. And we are currently picking our class song and gift. We're hoping that we can give a mascot to the school. Also, prom is May 23rd. The tickets are now on sale. Please go buy your prom ticket so we can have fun. It's gonna be at the Union Station, and Village Photo will be working with us if you want to take some pictures. There's different packages. You can ask for them. Let's see what else we have. For those students that are taking the AP test, I know vacation's coming soon. You have a whole week off, but AP is very important. And I have the dates just a little ahead of time so you can start practicing for those and getting prepared. So, on Tuesday, May 6th, is the AP Spanish test. Wednesday, May 7th, is calculus. Thursday, May 8th, is English literature and composition. Friday, May 9th, is English language and composition. On Monday, May 12th, is the biology. On Wednesday, May 14th, is US history. And on Thursday, May 15th, is world history. So, please have that in mind, start getting ready for it, but enjoy your vacation. And this is all I have for tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Rosa. Appreciate that. That was a lot of notes.
I know.
Could you maybe give a copy of those to Julie Ann?
I'll give her a copy.
Great, okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Eight is School Committee Reports. Mrs. Donovan, is there anything for the Curriculum Subcommittee to report?
There is no report tonight, however. I would like to announce that our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 14th, at 6:30 PM in Room N100, and the agenda for that meeting will be posted later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney on policy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report, but the previously scheduled meeting for tomorrow has been canceled, and that meeting will be rescheduled. Thank you.
And anything for negotiations to report?
The school committee began the negotiation process with para-union. On March 27th, we set ground rules, and we're moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Congdon, family and community engagement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Subcommittee met last night. Members present were Mr. Alivo, myself, and community member Erin Quinney. Our guest speaker was Lynn Simons from the Southbridge Community Connections. Lynn told us that the Family Health Center in Southbridge is now up and running. It's located on 32 Orchard Street, and it's open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. The phone number is 774-318-1445. And the Family Health Center is a community health center that provides high-quality medical care for your entire family. They accept most insurances. And they have a health benefits advisor that can help people enroll if they do not have insurance. They also offer physicals at that center as well, so that's on 32 Orchard Street, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. Ms. Simons also mentioned the Pay It Forward mentoring program. Right now, they're starting to recruit mentors. The Center of Hope and the Southbridge Community Connections has received a community block grant for a mentoring program. They need about 25 youth between the ages of 16 to 20 that will be trained as mentors. They will each have three mentees to work with over the next two months. The mentees that they are recruiting are seventh and eighth graders. They need mentors, so any child who is in those grades, sophomores, juniors, seniors, can go to Guidance to pick up an application to be a mentor, or they can also pick up an application at the Center of Hope, Southbridge Community Connections, which is located on 346 Main Street, or they can call Lynn directly at 774-437-2134 to apply to be a mentor. When Ms. Simons was talking, it sounded like a great program. The children have started, they'll be starting this training program, and they will be calling the program Clubhouse for the middle school kids. The kids created this program. It's a small space where the kids can go, and they'll be doing fundraising to help the program. So, any kids that are interested, please take up that opportunity. Ms. Simons also mentioned that the Southbridge Community Connections services, their largest population is about 85% Hispanic, their center is bilingual, and there's always someone in that center that can speak Spanish. She said a lot of high school students go to the Community Connections and parents, and they deal with a lot of different issues, which I think is a great service in this community, and we look forward to collaborating with her in the future. So, the meeting went very well. Our next meeting will be scheduled for Monday, May 5th, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I forgot. Can I just say something real fast? We recently had a district governance workshop, which Mrs. Donovan's gonna recap for us a little later on the agenda, but one of the things that the facilitator mentioned to us is that during curriculum, during school committee reports, other members be given an opportunity to ask questions if they had them. So, apparently, Mrs. Quinney has a question. I apologize for just thinking of that, but please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Congdon. Ms. Simons is also looking for mentees, is that correct? For middle schoolers to be mentored? Yes, I mentioned that. That she's looking for mentees, seventh and eighth grade. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions of anything else that was said? Or, okay. Sorry about that. I'll make sure in the future I provide that opportunity. Report of the SPED PAC liaison, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next SPED PAC meeting will be April 17th. The meeting itself will be from 6:00 to 7:00. Following that, from 7:00 to 8:00 will be the second in a four-part series on sensory integration by Anita Pullen. The SPED PAC wanted to thank Eastford Road School, who had 100% of their students and faculty, who lit it up blue, so everybody in the building was wearing some blue that day. And Charlton Street School also had a Light It Up Blue program, and thank you to them for their support of the children in our community who have autism spectrum disorder. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item, excuse me, Number Nine, Presentations. This evening, we're very pleased to have with us Mr. Ted Bartlett, who is going to speak about the United States Air Force Heritage Band Concert at Southbridge Middle High School on April 26, 2014. Welcome, Mr. Bartlett. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin, and thank you for inviting me to give an overview of what will happen as an excellent event at the conclusion of the spring vacation. I received a call in February from Staff Sergeant Darren Rayburn of the United States Air Force at Langley Air Force Base in Virginia, to which he asked if I was interested in sponsoring a concert here in town. And upon giving me more information, I said yes. So, he came up from Virginia and met with me on February 25th, and I had made arrangements to tour the middle high school because I thought that was the most appropriate location for an event like this. And when we visited the auditorium, he took numerous pictures with the intent of showing them to his superiors, because as he told me right then and there, he says, "Over a course of time, we've performed in many areas, in many functional areas, but this is beautiful." He was very impressed with what he saw, and I know that when the entire group of 50 musicians come to us, they will be impressed as well. So, meeting with him, we discussed a host of things that were needed. He presented me with guidelines, and I followed that up with a letter to the superintendent and to you, Mrs. McLaughlin, and also to the Town Council Chairman and our Town Manager. And the letter also was such that I knew that there had to be a form to be filled out in order to use the facility of the middle high school, and I completed that and presented that to Mrs. McLaughlin at the last meeting, actually, of the school committee. The form needed to be filled with signatures, and I obtained the necessary signatures from our fire chief and also the police chief. And I also requested that I needed a police detail, I'm sure, up there, and the auxiliary police will be the ones up there to help out with the parking, whatever is necessary for them to do. The police department also furnished me with a color guard, which was an interest to Sergeant Rayburn, since he asked me if there was one available. And I knew there was one, but I didn't know it was entirely through the police department, and that was done very well, and we expect them up there at about 6:15 PM on the night of the concert. As you know, the concert takes place on April 26th, and at the request through the guidelines provided by Sergeant Rayburn, he also indicated that there should be someone there to collect the tickets, to hand out the program, and assist the handicap for seating. So, I will be meeting, making an arrangement to meet with the Director of Music, Dr. Garcia, and see if any of the band students will be available that evening to do this. And it's a, it's a matter of they're also realizing that if they do participate in that, it serves well on their resume, that they were in attendance at a concert where they had a duty to do, so, and a concert of the government, the air force, if you will. Having received the guidelines from the sergeant, I followed that up by looking to see what the guidelines were for the Navy and the Army. They're the same. They're the same guidelines, in that they require the audience to come to the concert, which is a free public concert with free tickets. They require the audience to be seated by 6:45, so that those with no tickets can be admitted during the last 10, 15 minutes. The tickets are available through the gracious help of Mrs. Margaret Morrissey, the Director of the library. There is only one location that the tickets can be obtained, and that is at the library. It makes sense to have one location, otherwise it's hard to control the entire number of tickets that are available. I had printed over 650 tickets, because that is the capacity, 650, for the auditorium, but again, by the guidelines, they indicate that you should have at least 150 tickets more than what you actually can seat, because people picking up the tickets, again, another requirement from the guidelines is that anyone requesting a ticket is restricted to no more than four tickets, but it doesn't prevent them from coming again and asking the next day for four more tickets. There's nothing in the guidelines that say they can't do this. The band, the United States Air Force band, will arrive at around 3:00 PM, and I've already spoken to Mr. Solvak, the Director of Operations, who was here at the last school committee meeting, and he and I will be in touch to find out whether I need one or two custodians that evening. So, in essence, the band will be arriving at 3:00 PM on the Saturday for setup, and I will be taking them to dinner around 5:00 o'clock for them to return to the auditorium around 6:00 PM to get ready for the concert. As I mentioned, the doors will open at 6:00 PM for general seating. Ticket holders are requested to be there no later than 6:45. Following that, the publicity had to be attended to, so I had flyers printed. They were distributed around town. I still have maybe three more places that I want to stop in. The news has several news releases pertaining to this concert on August 26th. They had the first one last evening in the Southbridge News, and they will have a few others, because I spoke to Adam Minor concerning this. The Southbridge Cable Access Channel will most likely be there after I have clearance from the air force that they can film this. Now, the band comes in, the concert band comes in with their own equipment, including the sound equipment, and they will also check that out when they come in in the afternoon on that Saturday. The Telegram and Gazette has also been notified and been given some news releases. The Southbridge Town Council meeting last evening made the announcement also through the Town Manager and through also Mrs. Denise Clements. I had forgotten her first name momentarily. The social media list through the library is also in use through Mrs. Morrissey, and she will be putting that in, probably in already, because I've already given her the information. The expenses are almost minor, in the sense it's just the tickets, the program, the flyers, the meal, and if there's a custodian charge, and basically, that is all there is to an expense of a free public concert for the town of Southbridge. It's a cultural event that may well be repeated in 2016, because I mentioned to Sergeant Rayburn that we are celebrating our 200th anniversary, and he was most interested in being in touch with those people who are in charge with the anticipation of coming again. The event actually, I think, is important also for the students, and that's where I'm going to be going, hopefully, tomorrow, to bring the flyer, as I gave you, Mrs. McLaughlin, to be able to post it and maybe have an announcement at some sort of, to the students, that this is taking place. It could not have happened at a better time during school vacation where the school is available, because at any other time, it would not have happened, I think, because of a conflict, perhaps. Now, this group of musicians do tours. They're on the northeast tour, as Sergeant Rayburn indicated to me. Their first stop is Newark, New Jersey, followed by Milford, Connecticut, Springfield, Marlborough, Lexington, and we have them on Saturday evening. And the next evening, Sunday, they're in Fitchburg, and then on Monday, Noah, Connecticut, on their return trip south. When I spoke to him last Thursday, they were doing the Williamsburg area, in the Pennsylvania area. And as a result now, I hope that we have a great attendance. It's been publicized well enough up to this point, and it will be further, and I do hope that they come back in 2016. It's, it's a great group, from what I hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to getting my four tickets. Headed to the library tomorrow morning. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bartlett? Anything? Do you have anything?
I have a question.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is this the same, the US Heritage Band, or the US Air Force Heritage Band of America? Are they, do you by any chance know if they are the same band that is called Stars and Stripes?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. The theme of this concert is Heritage of America, he told me.
Then, it probably is the same.
It's the concert band that travels around, and I was amazed when I went on the, on the website to find that they have multiple groups. They have a jazz group, they have a blues group, they have a chamber group, and this is only- is only the northeast. Now, there are three others across the country also, and this is just one service, because the Navy has the same thing. They have a marching band, which I'll be putting a member of the committee for the 200th anniversary in touch to see, you know, what we can do, what they can do, actually, to get them to come maybe too.
Okay, I've had the pleasure of listening to Stars and Stripes Band a number of times. I think it's important to know that these are soldiers, and on the side of their duties, they do have to audition to be able to play in the band, and to be able to play these certain parts, so that they're given their leave to be able to travel and...
That's right. That's right, and on the website, on the first page, at the very bottom, the air force is accepting auditions for a piano player. There's one unit that needs a piano player, apparently, and they had that little blurb at the bottom, and I was amused. I said to myself, you know, a student going into the service after college, whose expertise is in music and such, has a wonderful chance of traveling, serving his country or her country, and enjoying it. Jean Ashton's niece, I understand, is in one of the services. She told me when I went to the news office, and she's enjoying it immensely.
Great, thank you. I just had a question I thought of. If there is some type of overflow, Mr. Wallace is here, not to put you on the spot, Terri, but is there a way that overflow could take place in either the cafeteria or the gymnasium with a video screen, so that people that maybe couldn't be seated in the auditorium could see? I don't know if there's that capability or not at the school. Thank you.
So we would know, actually, that evening? Okay, fine.
Just wanted to check.
As I said, the group is arriving at about 3 PM at the school, and I want to thank Kyle Graves for taking us through what he needed to see, Sergeant Rayburn, the auditorium, the music room, the drama room, and that little sound room on the side, where he said it would be adequate for the command, though.
To that point, did you want...
Yes, and if I might, Madam Chair, on behalf of the district, we would like to provide the custodians at no charge for you, for an event of this nature that brings culture and music, and also, we would like to help you get those programs printed, so if you would just drop by and see me or send me an email, we'll be happy to help you with that.
Okay, I spoke to Sergeant Rayburn this morning. He called me from Virginia again, and he informed me that he's sending me a program, PDF, and that I will have that at hand, he said, by tomorrow, to be able to go out and print it. So I will be in touch with you in the superintendent's office?
Yes.
Okay, fine. That's the last thing to be done, actually, before the event, and I might add also that through the generosity of one business in town, well, more than one at this point now, and my fraternal organization too, to help defray the expenses, anyone who has been approached or will come forward will be recognized that evening. And as I mentioned to Sergeant Rayburn this morning, I said, "How is that done?" He says, "It's done two ways. Sometimes it's on the backside of the program, or there's an insert that announces that." So that will be done too.
Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Quinney has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a question, but a thank you. You've done quite a bit of work to bring this to town and to provide this opportunity for this entire community, and I think, as a member of the community and a school board member, I applaud all your efforts. I know that sometimes it's thankless, and I think that this is a tremendous opportunity that you are bringing to us and providing everybody with an opportunity for a free event, and I thank you very much for all of your work in putting this together.
You're welcome. I might add that I didn't have the opportunity to visit the school until I went up with Sergeant Rayburn, and I was very impressed with that auditorium. And wait till some of the people who have not had that opportunity to see the school, that particular area that they will be seeing, I'm sure they'll be impressed. So that was my other thought in having them come. It showcases the school that there's been so much controversy over in various ways. So it's a plus. Thank you again.
Definitely. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Congdon has a...
I'm glad you said that. I was just going to ask that maybe we might be able to offer tours if somebody wanted to see it beforehand, or I don't know how much time there would be, but something that we might talk about if somebody did want to see the school that was up there, that doesn't usually get up there. It might be something to talk about, maybe some of the students might be able to offer tours, or...
That's a good point.
That's a great idea. That would be up to Mr. Wallace and superintendent.
We would certainly talk about that. We're very proud of the school. We're very proud of how great it looks, how clean it is, how well students treat it, they respect it, they love it, they're proud of it, so we would like to show it off in any way that we can.
That afternoon that I was there, I met with Mrs. Potter, and she also reiterated what you just said, a number of people haven't seen the school, and they should be able to go up there. As citizens, they can go up there. One point I'd like to make out, this is a public concert, so it's not restricted to just people of Southbridge. As a public concert, they may be coming from Sturbridge, Charlton, or what have you. I think that's a good point, too, where it is a public concert required by the air force. And I know there are seven people from Connecticut that are coming, because they already told me they picked up the tickets.
Thank you very much.
They're just over the line.
Great. We welcome them.
Thank you again.
We have a report of the finance director tonight. Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As of February 2014, we have expended 56% of the FY14 budget and expect to be on target again this year. There is some fluctuation in the budget line items, thus, I have presented budget transfers to the school committee for vote approval. Some of these budget transfers have a few more in March, because I'm currently going through all the payroll encumbrances to make sure that they're accurate, up to date, and also looking through the utilities with the tough winter that we've had, cold winter. My intention is to hopefully make sure that all the budget line items this year are balanced at year-end, and thus have an accurate accounting of each line item. Grant funding is now up from previously reported to a total of $2,309,123. Lisa Russo, Erin Osborne, and myself are closely monitoring the grants to assure that all funds are spent prior to year-end, and grant binders have all pertinent information in them already for the year-end, when the auditors come. Sped tuition to date, we are expecting to be over budget by $164,542 in sped tuition costs. I have already allocated the carryover in the Circuit Breaker funds from last year in the amount of $114,202 towards these costs, and will also be allocating $50,340 from this year's Circuit Breaker funds to cover this amount in full. The sped transportation, we are expecting to be over budget by $70,935 in sped transportation. However, we recently purchased a van to be used for sped transportation with funds that we received from state reimbursement for homeless transportation. We are looking for other ways to help save us, to help with savings, including sharing rides with other districts or combining runs if feasible. For FY14, this late in the year, we don't expect to see huge savings with this van purchase, however, in FY15, we are expecting to save about $70,000 by combining two sped runs and using this van. The Circuit Breaker, as you can see, special education is an ever-changing population with possibilities of additional costs. We're allocated $556,589 of Circuit Breaker funds this year. We have received to date two of the four installments of $278,294. As noted, I have used some of these, I will be using some of these funds to cover the additional sped costs. My hope is to carry over some of these funds, so that next year, if we have any unexpected sped costs, we already have those funds there. The audit and the end-of-year report are now complete. We had a very successful audit. I believe it went very well. I spoke to the auditor directly, and he indicated to me that he saw much improvement over last year. Several of the findings from last year's audit were closed as corrective action plans were completed. They also mentioned to me about the student activity funds, the guidelines that we set in place, and they were very excited about that. The end-of-year report has been submitted and audited as required, and now I can say I feel a bit of relief with all of that for this year completed. I'd like to thank both the superintendent and the school committee for their support this year, because I'm in the point right now where I'm seeing real improvement. Hard work pays off. My team has worked very hard, but without people surrounding you and supporting you, you just can't have that success. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Sheridan? Hands go up. Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. My first question was, do we use the same auditing company as the town, or is there a separate one that audits the school funds?
It's the same auditing firm.
It's the same one, okay. And as far as the end-of-the-year report, is that the one that gets submitted to the Department of...
Department of Education.
Okay. Is there any way that we could get a copy of that?
Yes.
As a member, just to see. I personally have not seen one to date, so something like that would be helpful.
Yep, we can get you a copy of that.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Sheridan. Karen, can you explain, I think all of us understand what Circuit Breaker is, but I don't think a lot of people that are watching could understand what Circuit Breaker is. Could you just give a brief overview?
Yeah. Let me just get my notes, so I can explain it to you very easy. School districts are eligible for reimbursement of expenditures for students whose special education programs cost more than four times the statewide foundation budget. By law, the districts are reimbursed for 75% of the costs above the threshold, subject to appropriation. Before Circuit Breaker, these extraordinary costs for sped students had to be absorbed by the districts, and sped, as you know, an ever-changing population often had to predict with certainty. If, for example, a student moves into town who requires special education, such as a residential program, the cost could be upwards of $100,000 plus. So this is really important for the district, this Circuit Breaker. Each year, the state gives us a percentage that they're expecting. This year, they're telling us to budget about 70%, but we're hoping about 75%.
Thank you. And then, I know you touched on it a little bit, why the sped budget is so hard to plan for, based on the population.
Well, from my experience in special education, you have, during the year, there are children that needs, one might be, their needs weren't recognized, and all of a sudden, they realize that a student needs an IEP and needs services, and so, it's a requirement by law if they, you know, get an IEP. There might be students that move into the district. There are often, when somebody moves into district, there are certain laws that you don't have to pay for a certain amount of time, but yet, you still have those people moving into district. Some of the other reasons, let me see, the transportation. Somebody might be in a residential program and suddenly is coming home for the weekends. That could cause your busing transportation to go up for that. So there's various reasons, and some of them you're not aware of in the previous year. So what we do when we budget for special education is, we have to take a snapshot of where we are at the moment. We try to add a percentage in case, for example, a collaborative is, might be increasing, so oftentimes, we will add 3%. With the special ed transportation, we'll look at the runs we have, and like I said, this year especially, we're taking a very hard look at the special education. I've been to a couple of seminars, trying to see what other districts are doing. There is a district in Massachusetts, Walpo, that has started with, they started with one special ed van, and they had a nice cost savings like we are anticipating for next year, and with those cost savings, continued to buy more vans until, after about two and a half years, they had a fleet of about 12 or 13 vans, and they've been able to successfully save the district about $1,100. I think that's $1,100 per day. They've saved an awful lot of money. When you look at it, one special education run could be upwards of $90,000, $70,000. And we're required by law, you know, to transfer, transport these students, so you have to find ways, and we're not the only district that's having difficulty with this expense. So it's a very hot topic when you go to the Masbo meetings. The Department of Education has a new website where you can go online and you would plug in your district of Southbridge. You can see what special education students in the local districts, what schools they're going to, what collaboratives they're going to, to see if you can possibly collaborate with them and share rides. You can also do it the other way, where you pick one of the schools that your special ed student is going to, and then see what districts... So it's a nice way to see if there's any way to share. Those are some of the things that we're doing to try to help with our transportation costs and for special education.
Thank you. I think it's just important to know that some of these things we can't foresee. If a student moves into the district that is on an IEP from another town and has a different placement, we can't anticipate who's going to move in at any given time and what that cost might be. And some of these placements are very expensive, as is transportation, and then also, as students progress through the year, identifying their needs, and then writing the IEP and then providing those services is not something that is easily anticipated during budget season.
No, and also, I experienced with my own child, there might be some different needs that they see as they get older, and those IEP changes and the needs change. I mean, you may need, some student may need therapy services that nobody recognized before. And so, you know, it's just an ever-changing population, and it's good to have a little bit of a cushion to try to, for unanticipated costs that you may have in the next year.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll be voting on those budget transfers a little bit very soon. This night, next, we have, this evening, sitting in on behalf of Superintendent Emmerco is Patricia Gardner, the district's director of teaching and learning. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. On behalf of the superintendent, I would like to say that we are pleased to have planned what we believe will be an excellent search for principles that we need in this district. It's been very exciting to see the candidates who have applied. We have candidates who have applied from as far away as Brazil and China, as well as some internal candidates. We feel like we have excellent candidates. We've also been filling very qualified committees of teachers who are volunteering, and some of the work is going to take place during spring break, so you can really see what dedicated professionals we have in this district. For the high school, middle school committee, I'm going to be chairing that along with Mrs. Colleen Culligan, the director of pupil personnel and special education, and I probably didn't say all of her title correctly. She is sporting blue stripes in her hair, Ms. Quinney, for autism awareness, and we're excited to do that one. The elementary committee is going to be chaired by Mr. Walter Solzak, and the pre-KK committee is going to be chaired... is going to be chaired by Mr. Aaron Osborne. As well, we're very fortunate, some of the help that we have from the DSE through our Advanced Improvement Plan, we are going to have on the elementary committee, Dr. Sally Dias, who is a very well-respected former superintendent in Massachusetts, who will be a non-voting member. And on the high school committee, we will have Mr. Patrick Jackman, who was the former principal of Taunton High School. He as well will be a non-voting member. But it's been interesting, and it will be interesting, to go through some of the resumes with them, because we kind of have a wide spread across the state of Massachusetts on some of the candidates who have applied. We also have a schedule for that. Actually, tomorrow night is the first meeting of the committees. We'll start as whole groups, but we will have three committees. For the elementary school, we currently have one committee. We're waiting to see with Mr. Bryant Montigny if the state allows us to have another waiver for him for next year. And that's, I think, the reason that we have one committee for the elementary schools. As you probably know, Mr. Dana Lab has taken a position out of Southbridge. We think this gives us a really good opportunity to bring high quality, to continue high-quality administrators in this district and then continue to move us forward. On Thursday, we're excited to have a 3:30 meeting for all teachers and faculty at the high school auditorium, where they can come and ask questions and learn more about the process. The dates as we go forward are, as I said, a lot of commitment to this. As I said, tomorrow is the first meeting, the sixteenth, which is next Wednesday, is the second meeting, where we will look at resumes. We will do interviews during spring break, the Friday, which is the twenty-fourth, the Friday, which is the twenty-fifth. On Monday, the twenty-eighth, if it's necessary, we'll do a third day of interviews. On Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, we will present the names of the finalists to the superintendent. And the week of May fifth, we will conduct on- and off-site visits of all of the finalists. And during the week of May twelfth, the principals will be selected. We're hoping to hire individuals who can come in, and if they have vacation time or some time, that they can come in and observe and actually start the year a little bit with us this year, so that on their July one start date, they'll be ready to hit the ground running. So we are really excited about the process, and we're excited about the community members who have dedicated their time to this cause, and I'm hoping that another meeting, we can maybe bring our committees in to be recognized here. And so, on another note, the school calendar is completed, and we've made revisions this year, which we think will be very helpful, that offer snow dates for parent conferences. That was something that we didn't have this year, and as the year goes, if you don't have something already into the calendar, it's hard to put it in when the bus is moving. So we're excited that our calendar is done, and we're excited that before the end of this school year, we will have seated principals for our vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Congdon?
I guess I could ask it after the vote, but just a question for the school calendars, once approved, when will they be sent out to the students?
I'm guessing that when they're approved, it will be online almost immediately, and...
And they're printed in the student handbooks, but typically, I think they like to send them home in June as well. And that's been past practice. I think that's a good idea for families to plan, so that in June, before they leave, they know the first day of school.
Right. So just for parents, maybe they can know that once this is approved, they can look online and maybe plan for next year? In regards to attendance and vacations, and just a thought. Thanks.
I believe the proposed one is online now, so, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, School Committee Actions. How appropriate. The vote to approve the proposed 2014-2015 school calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? I just want to say that it was Mrs. Congdon who suggested that the snow dates be added because of the confusion, or not confusion, but the delays that took place this year. That was an excellent idea, one that hadn't been thought of previously, and I just want to recognize her for that. Seeing no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda Item Twelve B, Vote to Approve Budget Transfers for FY14, as noted on the Budget Transfer Sheet, in the amount of four hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred twenty dollars and ninety cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda Item Twelve C, A Vote to Approve the Previously Conditionally Approved Field Trip for Southbridge Middle High School Students to Spain on April nineteenth through twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Olivo seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have we received all the requested information from Mr. Matusko?
Yes. If you, do you want to, do you know? I do have information. I didn't know if Ms. Gardner was privy to that, too. I did have a discussion with Katie Joris, the Administrative Assistant in the Office. They have received, the Cory checks have come back, clear and fine. They've received all of the medical insurance cards and...
Signed permission slips.
The signed permission slips, most importantly, from the parents. They are set to go.
And do we know how they're being transported? That was another question we had had.
Um...
To the airport and back, kind of means to...
I know the answer to that. I had inquired on that, too. They are going to actually meet at the airport. They're not going to travel as a group to and from the airport. They're taking upon the parents. It'll be the parents' responsibility. And everybody agreed, they had a meeting, and everybody agreed that that was going to be the best way logistically. So that has been confirmed. And then also, this afternoon, Mr. Matusko had forwarded the itinerary to us as to the flight itinerary, flight numbers, airline that they're going to be using, dates, et cetera, as well as the itinerary of what they're actually going to be doing each day in Spain. So, in my opinion, I believe, and I try to be as thorough as I can on this one, that everything that we needed to have is in fact there. And as far as we know, Mr. Matusko is all set, very excited and ready to go. So I think we're okay to vote this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a...
Please do.
Madam Chair, I would like to thank the school committee for being ardent in protocols and policies about travel. When our band went to Virginia this weekend, we had a student who became ill, and we handled it very, very well. Dr. Garcia would like to commend on handling it so well. But I really believe that the handling of it was because you had the foresight to make sure that protocols and procedures and insurance cards and parent information were readily available. And while these students are traveling abroad, I know that these protocols and policies, if there is any issue, will make it seamless. So I appreciate that effort from you.
Thank you for that. I did want to mention, too, something else that had come up previously, was a question regarding the rooming arrangements. And I am looking at an email that Mr. Matusko sent to us today, and just wanted to say that, and this is, I'm going to quote here, "We have confirmed that while we will be touring with another school, our students will be roomed exclusively together. This means that the three female students will share one room, that our lone male student will have his own room." So just wanted to let everybody know about that. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. That motion carries. A vote to approve the reconfiguration of subcommittee assignments as provided in the attached subcommittee assignment list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Olivo seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? For benefit of the public, at our last school committee meeting, Dr. D'Amico resigned from the committee, so it was necessary to reconfigure our subcommittee assignments. There are fewer people to do the work. So for the negotiations subcommittee, I've proposed the chair is Mrs. Erin Quinney. Members Kara Donovan and Christopher Olivo. For policy, I will chair that committee. Members, Ms. Erin Quinney and Mrs. Jill Congdon. Family and Community Engagement, the chair continues to be Mrs. Jill Congdon. Members, Mr. Christopher Olivo and Mrs. Kara Donovan. And for Curriculum, the chair is Mrs. Kara Donovan. Members, Mrs. Jill Congdon and Mrs. Erin Quinney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Excuse me. Agenda Item Twelve E, The Third Reading and Adoption of School Committee Policy File, BEDA, Notification of School Committee Meetings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Would you like to read?
Sure.
Please.
Thank you. BEDA, Notification of School Committee Meetings File, BEDA. As required by law, a minimum of forty-eight hours advance notice excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays will be given for any meeting of the school committee, including all subcommittee meetings. The only exception permitted is in case of emergency, which the law defines as "a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate attention." Notification of the dates, times, and places of regular meetings will be accomplished by periodic publication of the scheduled, the schedule for ensuing months. Notification of a change in a regular meeting time or place and notification of a special meeting will be filed with a town clerk at least forty-eight hours in advance, as required by law." The legal reference is Massachusetts General Law Thirty-A, chapters eighteen to twenty-five.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Congdon.
Just on the last sentence of the first paragraph, it's immediate action, not attention, just for the public on that policy.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All set. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. That motion carries. Agenda Item Twelve F, The Third Reading and Adoption of School Committee Policy File, BEDC, which is entitled Quorum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Would you like to read?
File, BEDC Quorum. A quorum shall consist of a majority of the committee as constituted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you very much. Next, we have Agenda Item Twelve G. This was an addendum that was added to the, addendum that was added to the agenda. It is a vote to name Patricia Gardner, Acting Superintendent of Southbridge Public Schools, effective immediately until the April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, school committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? For the benefit of the public, I would just like you to know that the reason this vote is necessary is the superintendent has been ill for several weeks. He finds it necessary to request a formal medical leave of absence to deal with his ongoing health issue, and felt it was necessary and in the best interest of the district to appoint and acting somebody that would be conferred the powers and duties of his office in his absence with regard to day-to-day activities. An acting superintendent is so designated when there is a temporary assignment of the superintendent's duties to an existing school district employee. The acting superintendent would be authorized to exercise the powers and duties of the office of superintendent in the superintendent's absence. This does not preclude the superintendent from returning to the district as he deems necessary if that, if the need arises, because he still will remain the superintendent. The acting is just to allow a district employee the opportunity and ability to tend to day-to-day operations of the district. Just wanted, is there any other discussion on this agenda item? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I just wanted to point out, too, that Ms. Gardner is certified to be a superintendent, and that's important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, and thank you, by the way, for stepping up and stepping in, and we'll help you as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen is unfinished business. There's no unfinished business on the agenda this evening. Under Agenda Item Number Fourteen, New Business, Discussion of the MASC District Governance Program. I've asked the Vice Chair, Mrs. Donovan, to provide an overview of the district governance in service that we all, we received on March twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at that March twenty-ninth meeting, we were led by, and MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees Field Director, Dorothy Presser. She is a seventeen-year school committee member and served twelve years as chair in the town of Linfield. And so what she did is she came and she gave us a PowerPoint presentation, and the first item of her workshop and presentation centered around goal-setting. And basically, what she told us is the first step as we move forward is the developing, the development of overarching goals, which are basic, general statements of where we want to be and how we're going to get there, looking at our vision, you know, moving forward. And then she demonstrated how these overarching goals can apply to many areas of our school district. They can be relative to our school's culture, our resources, our instructional practices and supports, as well as community engagement. And then, so once we have those in place, she taught us how we could next take these overarching goals and form them into SMART goals, to make our goals more specific, timely, and measurable, and again, in accordance to the vision. And getting back to the vision, it isn't something that it's just one person that comes up with that vision. It's a unified vision of each of the individual members' goals in alignment with our superintendent's goals, as well as our Accelerated Improvement Plan. So basically, what we took away from that part of the section is that there should always be a continuous cycle of improvement, that we need to clearly articulate our goals, define steps, and identify ways to meet those goals, and identify our existing and needed resources, and also determine a timeline. So from there, we moved on to monitoring our progress, where we could find ways to have our school committee meetings be more focused on student achievement. And one of the greatest tools that we took away from that was a suggestion that Ms. Presser made relative to her year-long agenda, whereby at the beginning of the year, we would try to come up with what topics were to be discussed, what actions were to be taken, and what presentations needed to be made. And she gave us some examples from the city of Melrose and from Linfield on practices that are actually taking place relative to that endeavor. And it was kind of an interesting way, the way she looked at it, is that once our school committee has our vision, then we know what our story is about. And essentially, every meeting should serve as a chapter of that story. So we're looking forward to perhaps talking more about that in the future and becoming a lot more focused and precise on the way we handle our meetings up here on the dais so that each meeting is in fact a chapter of our whole entire story. Mrs. McLaughlin mentioned this earlier. We also will be coming up with some guidelines that we can offer to support staff or anybody that's going to come before us for presentations. Ms. Presser actually had a full article and suggested guidelines that she gave to us. So now it'll be our job to come back to the table and work through that so that when people come before us, they can be more prepared and guided and have the presentation be more beneficial to all. Again, we looked at how to make multiple ways to make our meetings more efficient. And one of the, some of the suggestions that she made that we could consider down the road would be combining our motions, adopting a consenting agenda, summarizing our committee, subcommittee reports, and authorizing the superintendent to accept donations on our behalf. From that section, we moved on to ways to plan for the superintendent evaluation. She presented an overview of the superintendent evaluation instrument, which has been developed by MASC and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. She explained to us that there is a five-step evaluation cycle, a two-part tool, and she also went through the rubrics and standards. So again, it'll be our job now to come to the table and form that relative to our own school district. One thing that MASC is doing that will be helpful to us is they're going to be creating a webinar with a mock city or town of Mayberry that will start you from point A to point Z on how to actually go through the cycle of evaluating a superintendent. So that will be something that we will be taking part with. And then finally, Ms. Presser offered to come back to us at a future date as we move along to provide further assistance. And she offered to come back after our election in June to provide a transition workshop. As you know, in June, there are three seats that will be available on the school committee. So it will be important for the new committee members, as well as the existing ones that will stay on, to have a transition workshop so that we can assure that we get off on the proper step. That was a wonderful presentation, and we were very grateful to have her. And I think that we all took away a lot of good, good information that will make us more efficient and effective moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that overview. The next regular school committee will be held on April 29, 2014, in council chambers. At that meeting, we plan to have a presentation of Southbridge's accelerated improvement quarterly progress report. And also, hopefully, we'll have a second presentation from the Southbridge Middle High School Athletic Department. At this time, I would like to open up member forum. Is there any member that would like to speak this evening? Mr. Olivo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Bartlett for the work that you have put into this upcoming concert. As a soldier, it brings great pride to see these kind of events take place in our town. And the sense of pride that the community will have when they walk out of there will be unmatched. So thank you. I would like to say thank you to Pat Gardner for stepping up and look forward to working more with you. Would also like to say congratulations to the high school band that traveled to Virginia Beach this weekend and placing first with the excellence award. I've heard the band, and they sound great. I would also like to congratulate the National Honor Society and the other Honor Society students who were inducted last week. And all of this is just proof of the hard work that our children are putting forth in these schools. With that, I'd like to address the unfortunate event that took place at our last school committee meeting. I was really disappointed to see the lack of respect for the presenters that were invited to speak to us, even though the presentation was subpar, to say the least. While I support the members of this school committee, I do not condone the actions that took place that evening. I understand that emotions run high, and we are all passionate about the educational needs of our children. But I believe that there are tactful and respectful ways to communicate our concerns. There has been a complete breakdown in the relationship between the school committee and the faculty at the schools, and that needs to change. We need to remember that we are here with the same goal in mind, and that is the children of this community. And they are the ones that suffer when these types of problems arise. We should be mindful that our actions as individual members reflect upon the school committee as a whole, as well as our school district. It is my hope that in the future, we can respond and communicate in a more positive manner. Furthermore, I would like to extend an invitation to the parents and faculty members to attend the school committee meetings. I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivo. Anybody else? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that last week, I had the opportunity to take a tour of the middle school, high school with town counselor Kathy Nicola, as well as education and human services subcommittee member Leanne Pate. The tour was led by Mr. Osborne, and I just wanted to mention that the school was very clean, the classrooms were under control, and the students transitioning the halls were all very respectful. And I thought that the school is constantly improving. That was my third tour, and things looked really good. So I just wanted to mention that and thank Mr. Osborne. And Ms. Potter was on the tour at the beginning, as well as Mr. Mike Como. So I just wanted to thank you for that and commend you on the improvements that that school is making. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of my announcements were the same as Mr. Olivo's, but I, too, wanted to thank Pat Gardner for stepping up and helping us out in this situation and offer my support. If there's anything that we can do for you, please be sure to let us know. So thank you for that. I wanted to, based on what Ms. Brita had said, wish all the kids at the middle school who are starring in the show this week the best of luck, and also to their directors, Ms. Krans and Mr. Silvestri. I know that they are two very dedicated teachers over there, and they do very well, they do great work both in and outside of the classroom. So I wanted to thank them for allowing that good to happen there. Very excited for those 80 students that are going to the college fair in Milbury. I think that's fantastic, and I wish them all the best. To Mr. Matusko and his chaperones and students, I wish them the best of luck, a safe trip, a happy trip, and we look forward to having you come back and speak to us relative to your trip. Attending the National Honor Society induction last week, to Mr. Wallace and his staff, and to everybody that was present, the teachers, the students. It was a very well-done ceremony, and many congratulations to the kids who earned the honors that they did. And finally, to Dr. Garcia. I know that he works so hard with that band, and I had not heard before this evening that they had actually done so well at that competition. So I was very happy to see that, and I sincerely congratulate them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say thank you to both Eastford Road School and West Street School, who had parent luncheons last week. I was able to attend them both, and I think those opportunities are nice to see how parent involvement can be showcased. The both cafeterias during the lunches that I was in were absolutely packed. And in addition to that, regarding parent involvement, I know that West Street School has a before-school MCAS mentoring program. And the first day, when I happened to be in the hallway, there was about 60 kids there. So I want to say thank you to those parents who are dedicated, invested in their children's education to have them up and out the door and at West Street School by 7:30. I know, as a parent of three young people, that that is no easy task. So thank you to those parents for that commitment and for those students for being willing to work hard at 7:30 in the morning. I also wanted to build upon what Mrs. Donovan and Mr. Olivo said regarding the inductions to the National Honor Society, the Thespian Honor Society, and the Art Honor Society. I think it showcases the variety and breadth of talent that are up at the middle high school right now, and some of our best and brightest students in different areas. And congratulations to the band and Dr. Garcia. I know he works very hard, and that trip was a success. I also wanted to mention Project 351 is still collecting clothes until March 11th. They had a clothing, April, I'm sorry, April 11th. The clothing drive on this past Saturday was successful. I think many items of clothing were donated to be passed along to the Krans program. And Project 351 is a great program that Maggie McLaughlin is a part of that highlights leadership in school districts, highlighting all 351 cities and towns in the state, and giving those kids the opportunity to not only showcase their leadership skills, but to bring back to their community what they're doing, and also to be ombudsmen to the rest of the state regarding their community. So I encourage anybody that has gently-used clothing that is not soiled, up to, I think, adult-size medium, to bring those to schools and to put in the boxes by April 11th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's the youngest age of clothes that they'll take?
Birth.
Okay.
Clean out your closets. Nothing else? I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivo. All in favor, a show of hands? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourns at 8:19 PM.